Yuba Sutter Lives Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
Thanks for the ready call, ladies, for which stands One Nation Under God, Chief of the Municipal, with the thirteen and just to prom.
Do we have any agenda we are going to take? We're going to pull item thirteen G for the YC's meeting project. You can go with student reports.
Good evening to the school board and audience. River Valley's had a few busy weeks. Last week on Thursday and Friday, we had our midterms. On Wednesday during lunch last week, we held a fun event for our students for International Happiness Day and in preparation for midterms. Our students were asked what made them happy, and we loved seeing all of their responses, and they loved getting the ice cream in return. So it was a pretty good event. The next two days, Thursday and Friday, were midterms that went by very smoothly. Our Falcons put in a lot of hard work in getting ready for those. And this week, our teachers have been busy in putting grades, and we greatly appreciate that as well. Tomorrow on Thursday, we'll be having a Monday Easter egg hunt all throughout campus, and some of our prizes include a ticket to prom, a free yearbook, and more. So I think our students are really excited. It's gonna be fun going around campus looking for those days. On Thursday, we're also having a staff versus student game, and I think our students love that as well. It's really fun watching like your favorite teachers like pit it against varsity players. So we're excited for that one as well. Friday evening, our Punjabi Club is hosting its annual Punjabi night. So our students have been getting their tickets for a night of fun, dancing, and watching their friends perform. I know the dance teams for Punjabi Club have been putting in a lot of hard work for two performances, so we're excited for that. Our sports, we're doing something new this year. If you recall, we're adding esports into our sports program. So we've been hosting tryouts. I think tryouts are happening soon. And our boys volleyball has been having an excellent season. When they versed YC, they won that game. I heard it was really fun. I was in it a little bit, but we're really proud of the hard work they put in. Our girls stunt is also having an amazing season. They had two wins back-to-back last week, and again, we're really proud of them. I believe they're versing Sutter and YC this week. So I'm excited for whatever the result is. I know they'll put in a lot of hard work and dedication. For juniors, our state testing has started, and I think it'll go on until May. Maybe wrong about that, but I'm not excited for that, but I know it's important for all of our records and our school reports. So that'll be fun. And I think that's about it. That's about going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and audience members. These past two weeks have been very busy for YC. We held a bubble ball tournament and staff versus students basketball game. Both these events were extremely successful and loads of fun. Currently, in our class competition, seniors are winning with seventy-four points, and we've been holding multiple basketball and cash for college workshops during lunch and after school in the library. We started selling prom tickets, and we're super excited for tomorrow's Prom Expo. We are having multiple seniors and juniors model prom dresses and tuxedos for the prom season. We have a few local businesses coming out to display their services for prom, as well as we'll be collaborating with our culinary class and floral class, and culinary will be catering to the event. So we're super excited. Prom is April twenty-seventh in the theme is trip to Atlantis. We can't wait. April tenth, we'll be holding a multicultural day during lunch. Smith Honor Society, Black Student Union, and German Club will be putting on performances and displaying their cultures. Then the following Friday, we'll be having Food Fair on B Street from twelve fifty-four to one thirty-five. On behalf of YCHS, I strongly encourage you guys to all come out and try out our students' amazing food and drinks. Currently, our sub-team has been doing amazing. They won their past match against British, and they will be playing, not playing, going against RD this Thursday. Multiple track athletes have moved onto the Stanford meet, which is a huge accomplishment. Our softball is currently eleven to four right now, and our baseball is along with our boys volleyball, tennis, and golf, and certain teams have been working very hard. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on to the student recognition.
Oh, thank you. So we're gonna start with River Valley. So Phil, like, Dr.?
Sure, I'll have Coach Ronalds and the kids come on up.
So these are our winter sport athletes who are being recognized tonight.
So thank you, guys, for having us here today. I think it's really important that the board does things like this and recognizes the major accomplishments in our student athletes. And, you know, something that I really want to point out tonight that I think is important to bring up is that our seniors that are going to be leaving us this year, they're a special group because our seniors, they had their COVID year, right? So this group of seniors across the academy of all sorts, we should really give special recognition to their accomplishments this year because they've done it with one year less than other classes in past history, right? And so, you know, I wanted to just ask everybody real quick to give a round of applause for the seniors. So River Valley Wrestling, this year, we've had some great success, and we advanced multiple wrestlers to divisions from the league tournament to conference tournament, and then multiple wrestlers on to the Masters Tournament, and then to the State Tournament. We had two wrestlers move on to that. And so what I wanted to do is just mention their names, have them stand up. And then, do we have?
Continue.
Gotcha. Okay. Something that I also want to mention, though, is just our All-Conference. So the top two each year in the conference achieve All-Conference status. And so, you know, Prince Ramon, Andreas Say, Blake De La Fuente, and Colin De La Fuente were all in the finals for River Valley Wrestling. And top two, like I mentioned, achieve All-Conference status. So I think it's important to mention their names as well. And some of them moved on to the Masters and State Tournament as well. So our Masters qualifiers, we're gonna start with Colin De La Fuente. Or don't stand.
Yeah, definitely. We're getting.
Okay. Delia Katzenberger, who I don't think made it in. Andreas Say. Antonio Zamora. Prince Ramon. And Joey Paulard. And then out of these, so Colin De La Fuente and Delia Katzenberger also placed high enough at the Masters Tournament to move on and represent YCUSD, Yuba Sutter Community, and River Valley High School at the CIF State Tournament. And I've noted, Delia's not here, but I do want to definitely mention that she was a three-time state qualifier, which is an amazing accomplishment. And then a big shout out to Andreas Say here, who has already set his mind to it, and he's moving on to get to wrestling at Sac City.
I need a picture.
Where do you want us?
Um, we just need a little more beef this way, so the microphone's out of the way.
Okay, see you afterwards.
Thank you.
Okay, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. And from Yuba City High School, I'd like to invite Assistant Principal Sergeant Torres to the podium to introduce these winter sport athletes or the coaches.
Good evening, members of the board, district cabinet, and students and parents. So we're here today to honor our athletes. We had our boys soccer team. We have Luis Soto and Angel Torres. But our students are, they were talented on the team, on the field, and it's a testament to their love of the sport. It was fun watching them this season.
Is that yours?
No. We also have our girls and boys wrestling team. So we have Jalen White, which was a regional champion and state qualifier. Shanika Smith was a Masters qualifier. Israel Trujillo, a Masters qualifier at CDC All-League. Just Karen Singh, CDC champion. Maddox Farmer, Masters qualifier. Roman Roscoe, Damascus, CDC champion, Masters qualifier. And Gabriel Sparks, CDC All-League.
Who's the girl? I think I rehearsed the boys wrestling. Here's girls soccer.
Are the students coming up?
So are any of your students Catholic too? And write the rest for us. And the coach. He's, um, so. Yes, he does. He's really, he makes all the.
It was one of them. So I'm not ready to slam someone down to the mat, but don't ask me to stand up in front of them.
What was that, sorry?
Oh, it's teasing them. There's none of them want to be up there. I'm like, you're not afraid to slam someone to a mat, but please don't make me stand in front of those people.
How's it going, everybody? Just wanted to kind of go off of what Coach Ronalds was talking about already. In the past, we've only recognized the All-League kids at this meeting. I brought it up a couple of years ago that maybe we should recognize the Masters qualifiers, the State qualifiers. A lot of the teams on the campuses, you know, they don't necessarily go past the playoffs and stuff like that. All-league is pretty common to make that team. When it comes to the wrestling, we always have kids making a lot further. On a regular, I don't think either of us has ever had kids not make it to Masters. I'd say the last ten years, both of our teams have had consistent kids making state. A lot of programs on campus don't have that kind of success. This is pretty regular for wrestling in our district. It's awesome. It's awesome. We kind of. To kind of go off of some of these things, like they already said, Roman here is a two-time Masters qualifier. He's league champion this year. Israel Trujillo is a two-time league finalist, two-time Masters qualifier. He placed at Masters this year, not high enough to qualify for state. He missed it by one match. We're hoping next year he'll be able to be there. Maddox is a first-time Masters qualifier. Jas Khan is a league champion. We also have Gabriel Sparks, who isn't here, who's also another league finalist. Our girls, we've had a pretty good history of our girls doing very well the last few years. Shanika is a two-time, she's not here, but she's a two-time Masters qualifier. Our big one here, Jalen, who doesn't want to be seen. Jalen started last year as a first-year sophomore. Somebody that I thought, you know, I'm hoping she doesn't quit, she sticks with it. Kind of got roughed up a little bit. She put in the time in the offseason, went to all the offseason practices, offseason tournaments. This year, Jalen has made the finals of every single tournament she's been in, other than one, which was the Napa Classic, which is the biggest female tournament in the entire country. She actually placed there this year, even though she wasn't in the finals. We've had more girls go to state than we've had place at that tournament. She was also our very first-ever regionals champion, and she took fourth at Masters and qualified for state. So she has done some incredible things this year from being a first-year wrestler last year. So again, guys, you know, it's one of those sports where these kids are always going far. We plan to go to Masters, we plan to go to state. All of these kids have that aspiration. These kids work hard. It's unlike any other sport out there. They're getting up at four o'clock in the morning, cutting weight, driving an hour or two to a tournament, wrestling for twelve hours all day, going home, sleeping for a couple of hours, doing it over again. This is what these kids do for three, four months straight. Wrestling is growing. If you guys didn't know, female wrestling is the fastest-growing high school sport in the country, boy or girl. In the last two years, our middle schools have had probably the biggest numbers we've ever had, I think. Each team has at least twenty to forty kids. It's only growing, and our area is doing very well. So just want to keep it up, guys. Great job. Great job on you guys, too. Thank you.
I have Israel. There you go.
Come over here, guys. Want to get him?
Gabriel.
He's not here. I'll take that one.
I think it.
This Jas Khan. I see you. Goodbye. And you got Maddox. There you go. Congratulations. You got Roman. Nice to meet you.
Same spot. Would you please? Yeah. So you're fine? Yeah. Okay. You're totally hidden. There we go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Way to go.
So I would also like to recognize Josie McCarrick and Mia Beltran. They were on our girls' basketball team. They're both CDC honorable mention this year, and they're both seniors.
I have a fifty-fifty opinion. Pretty hard. And I'd like to thank this magical energy so hard. Can I get a picture of a few? Sure. Thank you. I want to sneak in there, too. Okay. They did the work. You're giving me award. Thank you, girls, very much. Thank you.
We also have Angela Berry and Chloe Gonzalez, who they are also with our soccer team, girls soccer. They were first-team All-League for both of our players. And also, we had boys basketball. Anthony Medina was our CDC honorable mention and number two in the state of California for charges taken. So I want to thank them for their committed success and many more victories ahead. Thank you.
We're gonna continue with our meetings, but if you would like to shuffle out now is the time.
What? I mean, we would love for you guys to.
We'll continue with staff recognition.
Thank you. So I am second in for Assistant Superintendent Torres and also Director of Prom Vote. So tonight, we are excited to recognize an exceptional district staff person who helps shape our culture of excellence. We know that staff recognition increases productivity, promotes employee retention, and encourages continuous improvement, all of which has a positive impact on students and helps YCUSD achieve its mission statement of preparing the foundation for each student to build tomorrow's world. So I'd like to invite Director Laura Esti up to the podium to recognize very young Ms. Pam. At River Valley, it's not very light that we will be here.
Hopefully, yeah.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to recognize Pam Lee-Han, who is retiring. She's been with the district for six years, a little over six years. But before that, she had a lot of experience in payroll in the private sector, in different school districts, and also in different county offices of education. So she came with a lot of experience, which we needed at the time. Because she also came at a time when we were moving from one financial system into our current financial HR system, and Pam had the experience to kind of move us forward and understand it a lot. So that was extremely helpful. Want to thank her for that. She worked really hard to get the payroll to a whole new level. When we had openings, she found the right people to put in those positions and really developed a nice team that kind of gelled a lot and really supports each other. And they're really a family over there, and you're gonna miss my guy. They're gonna miss you.
I know.
Good payroll people are really hard to find, and I'm so appreciative. I don't understand payroll, and so it's really nice to have somebody that does to make my job a little bit easier, make me look good every month and every tenth of the month when paychecks come out. Because that's one thing you want to make sure you get right, is people's pay. You're going to miss her. She has talked about retiring for, I think, a couple of years, and I kept saying, oh, no, not now, not yet. What about this? What about this? We've got this retro, we've got this. And she always said, okay, a little bit longer, and I haven't asked lately. But it's time, and I think it's well-earned, and we are gonna miss her terribly. And thank you for all you've done. Appreciate your work. But it's time and I think it's well-earned and we are gonna miss her terribly. And thank you for all you've done. Appreciate your work.
Can I get a picture of the two of you? Two more days.
Ready? We'll move on to comments from the public on items not on the agenda. We have, we have a few, so can you just read the statements, please?
Alright. The Brown Act specifically Government Code Section five four nine five four dash or point two provides that no action or discussion shall be taken on any item unless it is adequately described in a timely, timely posted agenda. Accordingly, though the public may comment on matters within the board's jurisdiction that do not appear on the agenda, the board cannot respond to such comments without running the risk of deliberating or initiating discussion on topics not properly before the board. Given the prohibitions set forth in the Brown Act and the risks associated with responding to public comments, the board does not respond to the community's questions or comments. The board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are defamatory or that violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The board shall not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of board meetings.
Thank you. And first we have Sarah Lozer.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Lozer. I'm here uh, representing Bridge Street Elementary School. On behalf of our parent liaison, Selene Munoz. I do best when I read. Uh, to report. Let me read. Okay. Dear members of the board, we are writing to express our strong support for the continuation of our school's parent liaison position. As teachers, we have witnessed firsthand the invaluable contributions made by our parent liaison in fostering parent involvement and enhancing the overall educational experience for teachers, students, and families alike. Our parent liaison plays a vital role in instilling and supporting parent involvement initiatives. From organizing educational workshops to facilitating parent-teacher conferences, she assists parents in actively engage, to actively engage in their children's education. Additionally, she manages our school's class dojo account, which serves as crucial communication platform between the school and parents. In the past two months, there have been over seven thousand views and interactions on her posts, which keep our families up to date on activities and resources available to them. Furthermore, our parent liaison helps create community, community by providing translation services during school functions, making them accessible to more families. We find that our attendance has been higher at events like back-to-school night, open house, and even trimester awards ceremonies because of Selene's presence. She has helped support and set up, the setup of free food distribution for families in need, showcasing her commitment to supporting our community. Selene has worked with parent volunteers to organize donations of our clothing closet to benefit students in need. When our students need clothing items, we are able to contact Selene and our students will be given what they need. We have all helped our students utilize this resource. In a recent district newsletter, we saw that the governing board had adopted three new goals, one of them being a commitment to the facilitation of diverse opportunities for inclusion and connectedness to enhance student and family involvement. We believe in order to meet this goal, school sites, school sites need parent liaisons. We find it worth noting that our parent liaison's efforts have been recognized and celebrated. She recently received an award for her outstanding dedication to connecting our community and fostering a positive school environment. We urge the governing board to prioritize the continuation of the parent liaison position at our school. Her presence is crucial in maintaining strong relationships within our school community. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust that you will carefully consider the importance of the parent liaison position at Bridge Street. Sincerely, the second grade. Uh, Kayla Lee Siemens, Sarah Lozer, Erica Allen, and Christina Ponte. Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Lemus.
Good evening. Um, I'm a fourth-grade teacher over at Bridge Street and I'm also here to um, urge you to prioritize the retention of our parent liaison, Selene Munoz. Um, we witnessed firsthand the positive impact our liaison has on bridging the gap between families and educators. Our parent liaison plays an integral role in increasing parent involvement on our campus, fostering communication and understanding between the school and parents from diverse backgrounds. Selene has been instrumental in creating a supportive and inclusive environment where parents will empower to participate in their children's education. She does this in many ways, but to name just a few, running E L S, nutrition, education, um, and parenting classes, all of which support our students. Selene is a prominent member on campus, attending meetings such as site council and interacting with students daily. Moreover, our parent liaison serves as a resource and advocate for families facing various challenges, whether it be navigating the educational system, accessing community, community resources, or helping to connect parents and teachers. Their, her commitment to the well-being and success of every student and family they serve is essential to the overall success of our students. Removing our parent liaison would not only diminish the support available to families, but also undermine the collaborative efforts between home and school that are crucial for student achievement and well-being. Retaining our parent liaison is, is prominent to upholding the values of inclusivity, equity, and community engagement. We urge you to prioritize the retention of Selene Munoz and other parent liaisons in upcoming decisions regarding staffing and budget allocations. Investing in this essential role is an investment in the success and thriving of all members of our school command team. Sincerely, the fourth-grade team at Bridge Street. Thank you.
And Rebecca Savadra.
Good evening, board. My name is Rebecca Savadra. I am here on behalf of Bridge Street Elementary Parents. And there's quite a bit of us here on behalf of Selena Munoz. Um, she's our parent liaison there at Bridge Street Elementary School. And while the parent, or while the teachers have touched base on many things that she's done for the school, one thing that she has done for the parent side is shown us what we can do as parents at the school, what we can do by getting involved in our students and seeing what they're doing day-to-day. She's given us the, the energy, the positivity, and just the want to be there and the best for our kids. She drives us to be a part of everything, every event that we have at our school. She's out there every single day, ready to get all the parents on board with her, whether you want to or not. Um, she's out there, uh, not only trying to make it accessible to our Hispanic community, but also to other communities. She's looked into A S L and other things that will help our, uh, our site as well, even though that's not something that she does personally. Um, she's always working on personal development, wanting to create the atmosphere and the environment of a safe school. Every kid that's going to school can always feel safe and comfortable when they see her in the mornings, when they say good morning to her. Um, she's there in the mornings with uh, the coats on the rack in the freezing cold or in the rain to make sure, hey, if you forgot your coat yesterday, you're getting it today. And reminding the kids as they're leaving school, hey, parents, your kids forgot their coat again. Come grab them. And just from those moments, she's able to talk to every parent and create just these bonds where even parents that we wouldn't know each other just because we're dropping off kids, we're now able to say that we're all friends now. I mean, I look at every single person, I could tell you every single person's kid and what grade they're in because she's brought that to us. And without that parent liaison position, I don't think it would be as strivable, I guess, I would say, in upcoming years. Um, not only that, but with P T O, with P T O, she creates the, the P T O and the staff, she makes it so seamless. I, um, I'm personally a part of our P T O at our school and I don't think we would have the event success that we do without her. She's the one that reaches out to the resources. She's the one that reaches out and makes sure that all the flyers are done and she's out there every day. They've also talked about food. She brings in food distribution every month to make sure our families have food on their tables for our kids. I mean, I could go on and on all night long, but honestly, as a parent, there's so much that she's done for us and I don't think we would be able to do as well without her. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to our consent agenda. Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion by Member Pretty, second by Member C O Seala.
Aye.
Right. Carries. Um, she has an action item fourteen A.
I move that we approve as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Alright, uh, motion by Member Pretty, second by Member C O Seala, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thirteen B.
Thank you. So in your board packet are the um, September Board Policies uh, C S B A for your consideration. The index is in there. This is a first red alerting. They will come back for consideration at the next board meeting. If you have questions or comments, please let me know.
And thirteen C.
So this is um, a resolution to uncommit the funds that we uh, previously committed. And we committed those funds for the purpose of settling up with the meeting negotiations that we did with our C S B A partners. So it's really just a function of uh, now releasing the funds so we can uh, pay the amounts um, going towards those numbers.
Any questions?
I move that we approve thirteen C.
Second.
Uh, a motion by Member Pretty and a second by Member Lamb, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thirteen D.
So I think I'd get the rest of these, to be honest with you. So I think I'll be talking for a little bit. Um. So uh, this is an annual report that is somewhat newly required. Last year was the first year. It's a um, summary of the transportation plan that we do for the district. Um, and this is in regards to new dollar, not newer dollars, that we, we received last year as well. Uh, the dollars are um, based on, it's basically a reimbursement program based on prior year financials. And we essentially get roughly sixty percent reimbursement for our expenses. Um, less other monies that we already receive for transportation.
Um, is part of our transportation plan having drivers with us? How are we doing on that?
Yes, that is part of the plan.
So how are we doing on?
I, I'll be, uh, we're doing really good. Well, so it, it's, it's still a struggle. Uh, it's, it's getting easier to um, attract them. It's still a challenge to the, the people that start off with the training to get them through the training. And that's common with every district. There's a fair amount of attrition. It's, it takes a lot to be a bus driver. Um, you know, uh, with student behaviors, the responsibility that you're doing and driving a big bus. So, so we do lose a, a number along the way, but we are pretty close to fully staffed. Um, and we have more training sessions uh, going on right now. So I think, I think, you know, it's been improving this entire time and for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're, we're, we're gonna be pretty close to fully, fully staffed.
Thanks. Not good.
Okay, no, don't say that.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Member C O Seala and a second by Member Lamb, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thirteen E.
So the rest of these items, and we're not, I don't, we don't have to take them all in one, but they're, they're just all part of our deferred maintenance plan, except for the last item, which is uh, let me see if it's throughout. Not the last item, but item H is really the continuation of the shade structure plan. So all these things, uh, Mark Button has uh, given several reports to the board as far as our deferred maintenance plan. Um, and these just fall in line with this. These are contracts. Uh, um, so this uh, first one up is uh, the Gray Avenue Painting Project. So as you can see, and this is interesting, uh, uh, you know, if you've been on the board a little bit, we go up to bid for these projects and sometimes we only get one or two bids back. Well, pretty interesting. Now we're getting tons of bids because the market's slowing down a little bit on the contractor side. So, um, so we went up to bid for the painting project and uh, we should, received several, several bids and recommending uh, a bid for H B restoration and a fiscal impact of a hundred and seven thousand fifty dollars.
All of these painting projects, they're all getting painted their school colors, right?
Uh, I, I, these are, I think, yeah, I think these are interiors. Yeah, so.
Okay. I just didn't want to see any more blue lockers at I C H S.
And Mark, Mark works with the Prince Law and Staff, uh, you know, I'm sure we're doing what's wanted there.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, a motion by Member C O Seala and a second by Member Quilty. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thirteen F.
Painting project at uh, this is terrible, right? Uh, so you can see several bids and uh, H B restoration at a bid of sixty-three thousand sixty dollars is the lowest responsible bidder for this project.
Motion.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Member Lamb and a second by Member C O Seala, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Real quick on these, so these are, since we have such a wide array, we work with these many, many contractors.
We have, but I'll let, if you, if you want to recognize Mr. Button, uh, uh, you can expand further on that.
Yeah, we've worked extensively with the last set of years. So they got a proper track record with this.
I'd say it's, it's the, the number of the gaps from one extreme to the next.
Yeah.
Like, now are you just really going for gusto?
They're, they're, they're pretty wide gaps, but I'll, I'll, to be honest with you, in public bidding, we don't have the option uh, to skip a bid if it's the lowest responsible bidder, but we do have the ability to make sure they are responsible better. They have a track record, they, they can do this job, but we can't uh, we have to select the lowest bid.
I understand. It's just when you see like, you know, two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars down, down. Yeah, that's like.
The Y S U.
Well, we're not contractors also can bury it even further south. So we haven't done that before. So a lot of these names, we've never worked with. So I think we're very fortunate. We end up with contractors, but we have a proven track record.
I, I'd like to make just one more request. Before we cut a check to pay these people, uh, who goes in and inspects? Because I can remember several years ago, they came in and painted um, the classroom that I was assigned to. And the contractor who painted, they didn't do any prep work. So if there was a piece of Scotch tape on the bookcase, it was painted. I mean, they did no prep work. It was the sloppiest job I've ever seen. Um, and this was many years ago. In fact, uh, Mary Henson was on the board, so it was a long time ago.
Yeah, since we worked at H B Restoration, we've actually set standards and they've been following the standards of, of proper prep. And then we go through afterwards when we inspect it before we do the final, we do a punch list. We do a punch list and, and they don't get final payment after the punch list is completed.
Okay, thank you. That makes me a lot happier. Thank you. I'm very impressed with you.
Uh, we just need a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen H.
Thirteen H is the um, the next step, uh, final step in the um, in the shade structures. So these are all already competitively bid and we piggyback onto the bid, so that's why you don't see actual uh, bids for each of these uh, items separately. Uh, total cost of the district is one-point-one million dollars funded out of our Fund Forty-nine. So we're favorable for that as well.
What has been the feedback of our current shade structures?
Uh, well.
Cars usage and?
I've got it. Do you have anything to say on that?
So that we, um, while I was just at Eva City High School and it was interesting because they, they were just, I was walking and they were teach class was going to go outside and work under the shade structure. So it was a nice day. It was, so I think um, they are finding them helpful and useful and also for a site like Gray Avenue where the multipurpose room is smaller, the kids are able to eat outside and then also during the warmer days, they're under shade. So I, feedback to me has been positive.
Using them, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve?
A second.
On a motion by member C O Seola and a second by member Quilty, all those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries? Thirteen I?
Ruben Project at River Ban. Uh so we did receive two bids for this one and you know, there's a sizable uh 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 difference in the bids there, right? Oh, so this is a let me explain this one a little bit further. Uh and Mark will be able to give detail, one additional detail, but essentially uh there's two parts to this and one is um I'll start with the B. Uh B is really the materials and the materials are purchased through a competitively bid process that we piggyback onto. Uh one of the reasons that we do this is it's the same material that we use at the district, so we're just trying to stay consistent. That's a very good product. Um the installation, we actually have to go off the bid for that part of it. And the installation i- includes some supplies and equipment as well, the labor to do that. Um the lowest responsible bidder there is Ruah and Sun, five hundred eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. And the combined uh project is six hundred sixty-five thousand six thirty-two and that's what we recommend for the whole thing.
Make a motion to approve.
On a motion by member Quilty, second by member C O Seola, all those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries? Alright. Uh board reports? And committee? And what about charter schools?
I attended to, I attended um Turner Charter School. Um they ADA right now for about a month of March, running just shy of ninety-seven percent. Uh fiscally, they are running strong. They have just did their um school lottery. They had about uh just over forty seats open and with over two hundred up to hundred fifty uh applicants.
Wow.
And uh they got back their state test scores and they are doing very, very well.
Okay, um any written communications from the board?
No.
Comments from the board representatives?
Good evening, board members, staff and well, but if anybody's out there in Zoom? Hello. I'm Mercedes Geraldo and I'm the uh chapter president of the U of City Unified C S E Chapter two sixty-five and a proud parent educator for twenty, almost twenty-four years at U of City High School. So I want to start by thanking the board and the district for supporting uh the professional development of parent educators um at I was not present at the last board meeting because I was down in Ontario with three other parents from the district. And um collectively, I think we took about twenty-five different classes from inclusion to just some some help, self-help classes. I believe one of us took um some CPR and got certified in that, so it was very, very productive. Very busy three days, um had a um evening of, I never say this right, so somebody help me, La Loretta? Did I say it right? Somebody help me. La Loretta? Okay, come on. Mexican Bingo, somebody help me.
Don't know what you're talking about.
I don't either.
La Loretta, La Loretta, okay. So anyway, I did win. Uh it's like a picture bingo in Spanish. Okay, does that help?
Lo, lo teria?
Lo teria, yeah, I said it right. I apologize for for um slamming anybody's language because it happened. But I did win finally and I won um two tickets to Knott's Berry Farm, so I don't know, I guess I need a vacation for that, right? So anyway, uh we do appreciate that the board supports this conference. This is a a premier conference for parent educators throughout the country. Um but it's really only available to California parent educators and it's sold out every year. So I do appreciate that we got our our registration down, we got it in on time, we got the early bird and um we made it happen. So that was awesome. Um let's see. And we've now got to network and bond with parent educators throughout the state, which is really an eye-opening experience, especially if you haven't intended something like this to see, you know, we're not alone. We are, our challenges are not unique and hopefully it took classes that were going to help us with those challenges. So um again, I appreciate that. Um I also want to take a moment to acknowledge that this pay cycle um our last job of our payroll manager uh got out our, rolled out our first part of the uh Me Too Agreement um retro in our bonus and retro for this this year. Last year's retro come on next paycheck, so they're already pumping up on Escape, so we can see that and it's kind of exciting. Some people, I've got some calls, maybe not as excited because, you know, they didn't realize that they just started later in the year and didn't quite get that full amount, but uh we do appreciate that. Um and C S E is very committed to uh make sure this layoff process go, is done as accurately as fairly as possible. Uh which is why our team is already met with the district and we're meeting again tomorrow to continue our work on the um seniority list by classification just to make sure that everybody's where they're supposed to be, so that when we're doing bumping rights, we're bumping the right people and there's no hurt feelings. It's already hard. There's already hurt feelings out there, as you know. Um this is a new process because of the March fifteen deadlines and the law, so we have a new law that we're working with. Lot of uh maybe confusion on everybody's part, I would say. But uh and that's where that collaboration piece comes together, that when we can collaborate and we have a plan it makes things less painful because our goal is not to cause harm. It's bad enough that somebody might be losing their job. We don't need them to feel bad about it as well. And there's a lot of people that got layoff notices due to bumping rights, where in the past we used to just say, send a notice saying that you have a possibility, but now it's actually a full layoff notice due to the law. And so that caused some confusion and, you know, maybe a little bit of anxiety with people. So hopefully that process will happen uh will calm down a little bit after we get through um the next round of meetings and hopefully as you set your budget, some of these um jobs will come back and we're certainly hoping that. Um so which really brings me to the next point is who's going to do this work? Because the work is still there. So without health aides on our campuses bell to bells, who's going to administer menis- uh medications? Uh our office staff, our backup? Backup to be means I'm on a break and I'm backing you up? Doesn't mean that I, that's not now my job to do this, right? So so we have to look at that. Who's doing this work? Parent liaison, oh wow, Broad Street really spoke for me. I don't even hardly have to say anything, but Celine is not unique in this position. Every site that has a parent liaison that's losing them utilizes those parent liaisons beyond probable their ability. They do so much for our sites, our students, our community. And we are part, part of our jobs here is to service the community, not just our students. So our, the parent liaisons are out there in the community, bringing families in, making sure that they're attending the meetings, our ELAC meetings, that sort of thing. And doing a lot of work for us. Uh our library clerks, we've laid off library clerks in our K eights, which means they only have a tech. So who's responsible to read to those children in the library? Who's going to help them? Because a tech has kind of a little different job, right? So um and how are our high schools? We have two comprehensive high schools and I spoke to this board or part of this board, some new people, but I spoke to this board a couple of years ago or beginning of last year, maybe, that um we were having a lot of problems. And so we committed more money to our sa- our safety of our campuses through campus supervisors. Yet we've laid off two and a half M T Es of campus supervisors between the two high schools. So I have a concern, I work on one of the high school campuses. I have a concern for safety on those campuses that we're getting rid of these campus supervisors. Um and then who's going to do this intervention with students? We have a lot of parents that have been working with students before and after school. Trust me, these kids' learning loss have not gone away. They might be getting better, but it hasn't gone away. So who's going to spend that extra time working with the students? I know our certificated staff also helps. Uh obviously, that's their job, but uh collectively, we can make a difference. And then, you know, less custodians. Does that mean our rooms aren't going to be cleaned as much? Are you okay with maybe your trash not being emptied every day? Because that, you know, we're losing some custodial hours. That might be what happens. Our priorities are at the schools, right? So and who is going to process? If you ever come to the D O, well, I know you all have keeps, right? But when, as late people come to the D O, somebody's got to get up and open this door every time. And they do more than just open the door. They process paperwork that comes in. They make sure that that the right documents get to the right people, that sort of thing. So who's going to do that? Are you going to take the buzzer off the door? That'd be really nice because it's kind of annoying. Uh but who's going to do that work? And so I'd like you to think about that. Who is going to do this work when these people are gone, when these positions no longer exist? And this is classified work that needs to be done. Will the burden fall on our already stressed classified employees? Or will this work simply go away? Will we just not be doing the work anymore and not worry about it? So I leave you to think about that. Uh there are many more questions that still need to be answered, but I'll continue to answer. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, staff and anybody out there in the audience. I'm Danielle Kids, President of U of City Teachers Association. Um I I first would would like to uh second the concerns you heard tonight from Broad Street teachers. Um they came to me and asked, how can we advocate for our uh parent liaisons? And I encouraged them to come speak to you tonight. Um that was expected, but the stand-up of that many parents to say that they were standing behind the parent liaison. Clearly, the parent liaison of Broad Street has empowered parents and that is critical to student success. We know that if we can empower our uh parents and engage our parents to help support them in the most difficult job any of us ever does, that we aren't given a direction book when we're handed that baby. It's just figure it out. Um and having the support to figure out how to do that better, um how to connect with schools. Um they, the parent liaisons perform a vital function for us, so I um would encourage this board to continue to look for ways to pay for those parent liaisons. I'd also like to recognize um some of our um arts, visual informing arts, our music program. Spoke to you last time about James and the Giant Peach. Um and I was there Sunday along with Doreen for um Linda Robinson's last directorial uh performance um of students at U of City High School. Uh Ly- Linda thanked Doreen at that board meeting um for all of the support for um the music and arts program in our district and I um thank you as well. It was good to see our superintendent um sitting there. Our kids are amazing. I am floored at what they can do with the right leadership. Um I encourage this board to continue to support um the arts in our district. I mean, folks are hearing a rumor that drama and choir are getting cut at U of City High School, but surely that's just a rumor and not really happening. Um I recognize that when great people leave, sometimes people are like, oh, that's going to be a hard one to replace. And I agree, Linda uh Robinson is going to be hard to replace. Um but our community supports that program. What fascinated me was the number of community members um present in that audience that say, I, I support the music program in our district. Um the volunteers that sit in that orchestra to support our music program. Um it's just impressive what music can do for our kids. Um our elementary music program is exemplary in that we offer um elementary music to grades one, two, three. Um we've suggested that um offering elementary music in grades one, two, three, four and five would be a great way to support our students. Some of you were on this board when the music department came and spoke to you about um what the research says about brain development and music. Um and they are well documented that that uh support in music helps support our students in learning in other areas as well. So we would encourage support for um elementary classroom music in grades one through five. We recognize that our uh music program is losing three longstanding members of their uh program. Stanley Thomas Rose, Jan Roberts Hayden and Linda Robinson are all retiring this year, so there's uh some big holes to fill in the music department at U of City Unified. And finally, I'd also like to address the arts, um the visual arts in our district. And again, that's another area where we've got some widespread communities toward the Sutter Theater. Um the the way the Sutter Theater and the the arts community has showcased the visual arts in our community is um i- i- it's it's another way for our students to have success. Um I would hu- highlight for you that on April twelfth at that Sutter um Theater uh it will be the U of City High School Arts Program on display for you, so I encourage you to uh partake of that. Another area I'd like to recognize is our career and technical education, because some of our students are um performing are in the arts, some of our students are in the athletics and some of our students are going to go on to um other areas of work. So tonight I'd like to highlight our construction management pathway, a new uh pathway at U of City High School. Jim Walz came over to U of City um Unified from Marysville, so um that is a great addition. If you drive by, you can see the sheds starting to appear above the fence. They are building stuff. Um and I can tell you, that is a skill they will take whether they go into um paid work in construction or just work around the house. It is a very useful skill. Um and then I'd also like to recognize our uh state preschool program. We have a robust child development state preschool program. Our state preschools run at a very, a variety of sites, including the Bernard Street um Child Development Center. Our state preschool programs offer our students um the opportunity for preschool before they go to TK and then kindergarten. And we know that early intervention is critical to student success. Supporting our parents and then supporting our students with early intervention is critical to us closing um the gap for some of our students. In addition to that, we have an ed specialists assigned for full inclusion at um two of our state preschools. Um those ed specialists work with our students alongside their general education teachers to support their students. Again, early intervention is critical to student success. I understood it well back when my daughter was in kindergarten and AK was year-round and uh so year-round meant that Lincoln School wasn't and I got to be the mom that walked your kid to school and volunteered in the kindergarten classroom. Great opportunity. Um and I saw then the gap in our kindergarten students. This was quite a while ago because my children are a little bit older than that now. Uh but it made it very clear to me why there was such a big gap when they got to eighth grade and I was teaching them at AK. So I know that that early intervention is critical to their success because by the time they get to high school, it's a little late for us to do that intervention. Although, we're going to keep trying because we're going to intervene until uh they're no longer ours. Uh and then finally, I'd like to recognize our math uh leadership. Uh the new math framework is challenging us to uh take math to the next level, challenging us to implement a new framework that addresses students' understanding math as well as applying those math ideas. Um I am uh pleased that our district is moving in um a direction of in actively engaging teachers in a leadership project to meet on a regular basis to talk about how are, what are our best practices for implementing this new framework and supporting teachers um to deliver robust math uh curriculum because it's not okay to say I don't like math. We got to figure out how to get folks to say, I love math and I understand it and I get it. And I tell you that as a uh professional math teacher. If I um I believe that in addition to all of those other areas of our brain, developing our math thinking skills is another way of developing our brains to think. Um so I um am proud of the work we've been doing and uh look forward to sharing more with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments on board members?
Um just a reminder that we will be on, the district, schools will be on spring break starting March twenty-ninth, returning on April second. Thank you. I'm a very short break. And then um I have, it's that time of year already. We are starting the planning, well, the schools are starting the planning for the uh eighth grade promotions and high school graduations. So I have to sign up and would ask for the middle school eighth grade promotions that uh two board members could sign up. And then um high school, if all of you attend that would be great. So I know um you will sign up for your uh schools. So I'm going to pass that around. You don't have to, if you don't have calendars, they can, they'll be the same as well. It is that time of year.
Aye. Take a look now.
Yeah, too. Our next board meeting is April ninth. I hope this should be against like seven. Can I get a motion for your turn?
So moved.
Second. Uh a motion by member Pretty and a second by member Lamb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. You want to do it?
Let's go.
UbaSutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties.